Recording in progress.
Call this meeting at order at seven oh eight, if a rule please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everybody. Dr. Willett acknowledges.
So just to give you a heads up, and some of you may already be aware of this, but I had to talk to Tony about it last week. We had this really great opportunity. The Talon Public Library librarian came to me to talk about an idea that she had, and her idea was to take the artwork that the kids are providing and do a monthly exhibit at the Talon Public Library with that artwork. And what's great about that is she'll have an opening night for every single one of them. The parents and guardians can come out to to view this, all the works. There's so there's a special sort of reception for them, and then for the entire month, they're displayed there. And the thought was that that is better than putting them on the sixth floor of the Hicks Building because people can't always get appearance. And it's also better than us having them in the hallway of the board office because again, people can, but they can go in, they can you know, visit the library, they can check out books, they can do all of that stuff. So what we're doing now is we are going to have the kids go there and have the exhibits, but what we will do is we will announce them here. I think the first one is either coming up or just recently came up and has been announced. We'll put it in the newsletters. We'll put it in, in a series of places so that people can find them. Yeah, and still be able to to kind of go visit the work. So that's just the the heads up that we'd be moving things to that, to that kind of, to the public library. What I was hoping to do, another so hoping to read off the kids' names here though, still, so that we can you know, we can acknowledge that they they're, you've done some great artwork. So what I'm gonna do is just give you some of the names of the kids. And, you know, and then, well, from now on, we'll be announcing that their artwork is displayed there. So Hella Wright did a great painting. Ella Bajarski did some awesome poetry, pottery. Alyssa Castagna did some awesome pottery, pottery and pottery. Not a water problem. Ryan Gallachant did some incredible photography. Benjamin Critton did some great photography. Olivia Socha did some amazing art. Nia Hang did some amazing art. Kayla McKee also did some amazing art. Lina Discon did some art. Jay, Jason Mullen did some art. All of their art is on display at the Talon Public Library. I encourage everybody to go there and take a look at the amazing things these kids have done.
Do you know the location of the artwork? Is it behind the glass, but behind the checkout?
They did a
checkout?
I don't know. They, I think they were gonna put it off to the right in that room, and then they decided to, I think, move it. And I don't know where they moved it after that, but it'll be obvious. When you come in, just ask for it, they'll direct you to the area they have.
I plan on driving high in there, so.
I go there like twice a week, so.
And it's actually the, the one that happened, the one for this month was October eighth from six to seven thirty, but I'll announce them. I'll put them on the board dashboard. From now on, as they come up.
I'm just wondering if there might be an opportunity where we could like get photos or something, and we can at least kind of scroll through them as we're talking about them here at the board meeting for those of us who don't get to the library. And then the public who might not get to the library can see them as well. I, I, I don't want to make a big job of it, but I would like to see what the artwork is to go with the students' names and stuff if we can.
Look into feasibility, I think.
It's not.
Yeah, I think I can ask that Jen, we take a picture of.
Yeah, maybe not.
The other question I have, you said they had one last night?
Yeah.
Yeah, I apologize if it was in the superintendent's school, it's why I didn't.
Well, it's new for us. It's new even for me. So I, I just got that coordinated and then she did it before I even you know, we sent them, let them know, we send them letters congratulating them, but she had told Jen that was, and they sent those letters out, and it was yesterday.
Is it Megan doing it?
Huh?
Is it Megan who's doing it?
The
The children's.
Oh, the new children's librarian. She, it's the new, it's the new director.
Oh, all right.
Who helped organize that.
Yeah, so Dr. Will, when you get that list of dates, why don't we put that under public points of information?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure she's, she may be announcing the month, the month, but I will, I will. I know she's working on it.
I know the town, they have blast as well through Facebook.
Town page is.
Like to get them in order.
Yeah, I'm probably should be involved though.
Yeah, I think that's really nice.
Yeah.
So, moving on then. Do we have any additions to the agenda?
I got a long. I got a long list.
Do we have any additions to this agenda?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. I will entertain a motion for the approval of the September twenty fifth, twenty twenty four meeting.
So.
Second. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. Katie?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Aye, Brian?
Aye.
Reenie?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Dan?
Aye.
Minutes passed. Thank you all. Moving on to public participation. The members of the Board of Education welcome members of the public to share their thoughts and ideas at this time. When appropriate to do so, members of the Board and the administration may respond to comments during the points of information. However, in consideration of those in attendance and in an effort to proceed in a timely manner, follow-up discussion may need to take place outside of the meeting. For those online that would like to speak, please begin with your name and address for the minutes. We'll have two minutes. Raise your Zoom hand if you're in the room. Raise your hand, step up. Second, would anybody online like to speak? Right? Seeing none, who will close public participation? Correspondents?
Just one email in the last two weeks, personally issued that Dr. Willett is addressing.
Thank you, sir. Points of information. Would anybody from the Board like to bring up the topic or speak?
Just like to say that I do appreciate all the information that Walt provided the other day during the lockdown situations and that, you know, keeping the town, the parents involved as much as you could, that's how I'm gonna do it. Thank you.
And the others?
I, I'd say thanks to the State Police Public Safety. Thank you, Brian. And also thank you the State Police Public Safety and the staff, students, parents. It's always a tough situation, and I think the community really came together to help resolve it. I'm appreciative of that. But thank you, Todd, everybody involved.
And I, oh, Keyan, yeah, I happen to be in a meeting with Dr. Willett when the initial report came, and so I, I got to spend that time in the waiting area there. And, and, you know, I, I want to give an added weight to the, the people in the BOE office that navigated the, just the maelstrom of information, and it seemed like more people wanted to come knock on the door than at any other point that I've been in the building, and I think they handled it extremely well. Just so please give my, my appreciation to your staff, Dr. Willett, and that was wonderful. All right? Any others? Okay, moving on. Committee and liaison reports. Kirkham? We reported last meeting. Communication?
We have a meeting next week.
Policy?
We met today and went over a couple of policies that Dr. World's gonna bring to agenda planning to get on the next meeting, hopefully.
FFC?
Yes, same. Apologies. Can you hear me okay?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
I just switched over from my phone and made it back. Apologies, I couldn't be there in person again, but we met at five thirty, six thirty today. I'm gonna take my notes and I'll report back in our next Board of Education meeting from this month.
Thank you, Dan. Negotiation?
We, none at this time. We have just scheduled a few meetings with the Secretaries Union and the Constarians Union early next year.
And moving on, the Chairperson's report. Good evening. As many of you are aware, I like to spend some time reflecting on a quote that is germane to the week ahead. This week's quote is from former President Woodrow Wilson. On the subject of public service, President Wilson is quoted as saying, "You are not here merely to make a living. You are here to enable the world to live more amply, with greater vision, and with a finer spirit of hope and achievement. You are here to enrich the world, to impoverish yourself if you forget this error. For a variety of reasons knowingly or unknowingly, we have knowingly or unknowingly embraced this philosophy when we volunteered to give of our time to enrich the world. Now that our schools are open, it is a good time to reflect upon our activities and ensure that our vectors are sound. An excellent lens through which to make this assessment, but a Board of Education goal that we as a united assembly created for ourselves. Engage in a transparent, robust, and responsible budget process that maximizes innovation and efficiency, supports student growth, and is well communicated to the community. I believe we've moved the needle on this one during the last budget cycle. The leadership team has begun brainstorming processes, modifications, to make the process and its intentions clear for all stakeholders. I sincerely appreciate all of you that have already provided ideas on how we can do that, and how we can be better in this next one, and ask you to continue. Ensure that our school properties provide strong safety, security, structure, and wellness conditions for all students and staff. I want to personally thank some people that are passionately working to make this goal a success. Mr. Staba, with his focus on preventative maintenance measures such as the power quality, the depths of our discussion over the capital budget submission shows the sport's commitment towards these facilities. Dan Sheridan's FFC Committee is looking intently at the development of a five-year plan that attempts to forecast the unpredictable. My appreciation also, appreciation also goes out to the members of the talent, safety, and security community for their continued efforts to evaluate and enhance our processes and drills. My thanks go out to the individual town counselors that have given of their time to meet outside of the budget cycle. Foster a data-driven positive learning environment focused on strong academics, professional development, and meaningful social and emotional support for the students and staff. I invite the, the public to take some time and sit in on our committee, our committees. The work being done specifically that came to mind is Mr. Thompson's Communication Committee and, and the work that you guys have been doing to try to identify opportunities for our students. What's co-curricular activities? Home here, there. That, as you seek to identify what the students and staff need by asking them, we can then adjust to fill that need. What better way to identify the challenges and opportunities than to go directly to the source? And I think you do a great job of making that happen. Nurture and support a just and equitable, just equitable and inclusive school community where all stakeholders are acknowledged and respected. While this one is no more important than any of the other goals, this one has probably been laid upon my heart more than any other. The engineer in me likes to call this a force multiplier, creating a school climate that the wonderful, that enhances the wonderful details of all of our students, staff, and community automatically increases the strength of our ability to educate. This is the, a direct way that we can help each other and in doing so reduce pain. Right? Dr. Will, moving on, Superintendent's report, K one, monthly financial report.
So as you know, at the beginning of every month, we have a financial report. The FFC also reviewed the September in the greater detail. The monthly financial report for the Board reflects the month of September. It's always one month in a behind the actual report itself. The narrative of the monthly financial report is available for you here. As you can see, we've got you know, roughly two point two percent of the budget left yet unallocated. The monthly financial report also has a summary page that summarizes many different budget areas. I will give you briefly the highlights of some of them. I'm not gonna go every single one. But I would just highlight things that are little, you know, that may look, say, over budget, things like that. Even though it's not a lot, because again, this is reflecting just September, so it's only really July, August, September, three months in. But the stipends is over by about six thousand, and that's due to two special education stipends that, that are provided for staff. Sometimes certain things that need to be covered with IPs are not all possible during the contractual day, and we have to, you know, provide some additional funding for that. What's good about that is that when we provide a stipend under, I think it's Article thirty eight, it tends to be a way to, to manage something that is needed, and, you know, it's provided for within the contract, so it helps. This is one of the areas where, you know, that's necessary, and so, well, you know, that's happened for that line. Help like disability insurance. That's code two ten, that's over by three thousand. That amount will continue to fluctuate there based on vacancies and retirements and things like that. Those are the two ones that really jump out kind of as overall. Everything else, or most, not everything, but as you can see, most things are still under budget because we really haven't had that much experience this year. I haven't gotten enough through the year for those to have been drawn down, so I'll stop there. And if you have questions, I'll do my best to answer them, otherwise I'll grab, you know, I'll take them down and I'll respond on the dashboard or next time.
Questions? Here. Anybody in the room, anybody online? Hearing none. Dr. Willett, I'm K two.
Right, K two is the NEASK update. So just to give you a sense of where we're at, we had a, and thank, I give kudos to the high school staff, kudos to high school administration. They did a fantastic job. Many of you may be aware that the New England Association of Schools and Colleges come out, and they do ten-year evaluations of schools, but as they're approaching the ten-year, they'll come and they will usually do one at, say, the eight-year point. And so they do a flyover and send a team to go to the high school and to go through and meet with all the departments. Actually, some of you, there were some things happening. They, they have to do this during the day because the visiting team is people that you know, are from NEASK, and NEASK does not come at night. So NEASK will come during the day. So there was a, I think it was prior board opportunity to bump in on that. I'm not sure people could make it because it was smack noodle of the day, but they set their, they set their schedule and they roll through. So, um, so we did a great job, and the accolades here are that they, they felt we had great social, emotional learning programs. They thought that we had courses that allow students to explore the experience of historically marginalized communities like Black, Latino Studies, Native American, that the schools are utilizing the portrait of a graduate, and, you know, we do a great job of making it a, a live document. It's not just something we post on a wall. It's actively in our curriculum work, our understanding by design work, which is a vernacular education, that is a curriculum way of designing curriculum, really in the short version. And so they gave us kudos for having that embedded in our discipline. The high school right now is embedding it in its discipline code and its, and its rubrics. So it's not just a document on a wall. It's alive. They recognize that. They accoladed us for full day early release programming and development and professional development that give teachers an opportunity to collaborate. And that there's, you know, initiatives led by the district that are related to social, emotional learning, and that we adhere to the state guidelines for supporting LGBTQIA students, and they recognize that as, you know, part of the positive. And improved instructional strategies and reflection opportunities for faculty through our professional development evaluation committee, and, you know, there's always room to grow, but they recognize that we have an active one. They were actively engaged in a number of ways last year, and we have a TVAL subcommittee that did an awesome job, and a lot of work this year creating the new evaluation plan that the state of Connecticut gave us a very short span of time to execute. These teachers did it. It's amazing, and it was fantastic. Hard work and everything they put into it. Teacher education mentoring that supports beginning teachers was something they, they felt was done well. The recognition and celebration of students who demonstrate shared core values of grit and perseverance and integrity through our pride program. And the faculty's regular engagement and peer observations and professional discourse. The schools, you know, got a great environment and has abundant technology for, for our students so that they can engage in all spaces. So these were all of the accolades they laid out there for our school system, for Talon High School. Overall, seven of the eight foundational elements in the standards of accreditation were met for the school. The one foundational element that was not yet met by the school and was set for NEASK as a priority area for growth was curriculum. That we need to have a written curriculum in a consistent format for all courses and all departments across the entire school. So, and then I, I added some subbullets about what that kind of means, that the school will write consistent in a curriculum, a consistent curriculum, a curriculum in a consistent format for all courses. School provide opportunities for meaningful and purposeful faculty and administration to inform PD needs. The school enhanced programming and staffing opportunities to support academic, social, emotional wellbeing. Professional staff will implement a multi-tiered system of support, MTSS, to increase intervention, and the school and stakeholders work together to fully implement supportive of graduates so that it drives curriculum. So again, these bullets are really all centered around curriculum, and those standards are the ones I listed connect back to the overall standards. So we have engaged in a curriculum initiative this year, and the staff has been doing an amazing job, you know, as of the time that I put this together. We have twenty-six different curriculum and construction and assessment teams. And they're working, so far we've had at least three or four meetings at this point. I think it was three. They've engaged in three at least as of October second. For instance, I'm working with the social studies teachers, six twelve, and the NEASK is basically just nine twelve, but we have both efforts, K five and six twelve. Those twenty-six teams are focused six twelve alone. And so, for instance, you know, when I was with the social studies teachers, we were looking, we were working on, and I was helping with their curriculum mapping, their aligning standards to their coursework. And so my role, for instance, in that is helping to facilitate any of the needs they have as we do this important work. So I might send them links to the different standards from the state of Connecticut. Help provide the templates, help provide some of the, you know, setup for drives so that they can access the materials and then produce and work on the curriculum maps and standards alignment, and I act as a resource. They're the brains, and I'm sort of their assistant, helping get things done. And so we've engaged and have fully started to move forward, and all of that work, we expect to be right on track for when NEASK comes back. And when they come back, you know, every area that, those seven out of eight areas, they're not really looking so much at the seven anymore because they felt like we were doing great with those. They're gonna come back and want to see that we made, you know, progress on curriculum. And so our efforts have been to make that progress on curriculum. And we've been doing that all along. In fact, when NEASK visits school systems, a lot of times, the thing that they will bring up for a school system is curriculum. It's the most common, generally one of the most common things that they'll say, and that's usually because districts, you know, there's just not as much funding to, to have massive curriculum efforts happening all the time. So when they do have an area that is not yet met, it's usually curriculum. So we're right about where you would expect to be. They have to, and when NEASK comes through, they usually have to comment on something. They can't just say, so they'll usually come through and say, hey, you know, these are great, but by the way, we'd like to see you do some more over here, which is curriculum. So, again, I I can't say enough about the high school teachers, all the teachers. In this case, NEASK is focused on the high school. You know, all of our teachers do an amazing job. They're all making great progress with curriculum. It's driven, you know, by them and, and what they bring to the table. But the high school, through the NEASK process, they deserve a lot of kudos. They, they're just doing an amazing job. So if you look at the very top of the letter, it says that you know, that they came, they did their review, and that they reported that they are continuing our certification. And that's, you know, we expected that. We didn't expect to, to have them say otherwise because they do a great job. But they're coming back. If you scroll to the bottom, they'll be coming back, you know, in February and twenty twenty-five, I believe. No, wait, no, no, sorry, decennial, I have to relearn all times. They're coming back in March sixth, twenty twenty-six. And they will be here from March sixth, twenty twenty-six through March eleventh, twenty twenty-six to do the, this decennial, which is the ten-year visit. And that's, that's when they come back and say, tell us what you've done with curriculum. And that's usually, they bring a team in, they put them up in a hotel, kind of like they did for this one. And they hang out for a couple days, they walk through again classrooms. The other thing is MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support. We've talked about intervention. That's another thing they were, they want to see is that, you know, that we've committed some resources to interventionists at the high school. Most of the time, interventionists have been, you know, at the K two, pre-K two, K three, five, six, twelve. The high school needs some intervention stuff. And it's, you know, there's some scheduling stuff we can do. The principal's been looking at, it's called skinny blocks. But they'd like to see us have some more MTSS, and what that is, is multi-tiered system of support. It really means intervention for kids that, you know, need it, who are not students necessarily, especially.
Questions? Go ahead. So what is the current? So the class is better being taught now at the high school. Where is the current curriculum? What, what format is used now that's going to be different from what's going to be generated over the next eighteen months?
Well, the UBD format is acceptable to them. That's our, that's the format that we use. It has a stage one, stage two, stage three. So what I can do is
What do you mean? I, I'm, I'm a novice. What do you mean by stage one, two, three?
So what, what would be probably
Like English one oh one, give me an example on how that is now versus what is going to be in the next eighteen months. Can you do that for me?
Yes, it's just that more need to be covered. Not that the ones we have are terrible, just that make sure you do it for all courses, you know, try to get all of the curriculum for all subject areas done. That's basically what NEASK is saying. The process we have is good, and it probably would be a good idea if you would entertain it. In the curriculum committee, we could do a presentation on that format and how it's laid out, stage one, two, three, all of that, and then we could bring it up to the, the greater board and do a presentation. Because the ed speak is thick in curriculum, so so you know, stage one is making sure that you are in alignment with your standards and you have curriculum maps. Stage two, and I'm being very generalized, to make sure that your assessments are aligned to exactly what you say you're teaching. Stage three is roughly how that is implemented directly in a classroom. So stage one is, you know, the, the planning and the alignment with standards and, you know, pacing and and curriculum mapping, stage two is the, you're testing them and making sure that they know what you've been teaching, and stage three is implement, implementation stuff in classroom, you know, more of the granulars of how you're doing it on the day to day. I mean, just, those are very rough generalizations, but that's, there's a group called MCTI, M-C-T-I-G-H-T-E. If you Google MCTI, you'll, and Google understanding by design, you'll see the core philosophy that's used in this district or in, in most other places because it's a very popular thing for curriculum work, and it's On this district or in, in most other places, because it's a very popular thing for curriculum work and it's. It's working backwards from what you expect them to know and then creating all the structure around it. So it would be a great thing to do a presentation on here, there's plenty to talk about. But that's the, probably without all that speak, that's roughly it.
Can I just, I follow up with that, so, just so, so we have that format set for some of the curriculum that's being taught, but not everything. That currently being like, we have a set format, we don't, we're missing some areas?
Well, we, we, there are areas where it hasn't been completed or it's old. And part of it is that. In, in the past, the district would do curriculum writing basically during summers at the end of the year, like if there was something money left over. You'd bring a team in and you'd have this mad rush, but you had to get it done before July 1st because you had to spend that. And you would bring in people and you'd attack certain areas of curriculum and you'd get these, these five of the 30 done, and then you had to wait till the end because, you know. You had to wait till you had something available. I changed that into a format where I try to fund curriculum projects as they arise, so. Teachers will come together and say, we really need to update this, that, or the other thing. And the team of teachers would come together, they would attack an area. And we would be able to do that, which meant we were able to do more than, than we did when you were just doing it in mad rushes at the, you know, end of the summer or whatever. But then, you know, we still can't make enough progress that way, so we retooled to utilize, and this is why when we were. Talking about calendar, we were asking for more ER days.
Yes.
That's part of why, when we did that calendar conversation, in order to actually be able to get more curriculum done faster, it can't be in these like here, 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 when teams go together. We have to have enough time dedicated to do that, so we got to get these teams together more often so that they can do more, more quantity of that curriculum development. So when we made the new schedule, we added more ER days and, and we got in a contract of more, one more in-service. And we're utilizing them fully this year, their CIA, the curriculum instruction and assessment teams are assembled and working during all the ERs. They're working during in-service days, they're working during, you know, during special time, set aside and wraparound time, things like that. So we greatly expanded the number working and we greatly expanded the times where they're working. And, and through that, we'll be able to do much, we'll be able to move forward a lot faster. But we needed the time in the calendar to do that, and some districts have every Wednesday or something, you know, and that, that makes it even more. More possible to get it done, you know, the way it needs to be done.
Yes.
But keeping in mind, the, there still needs to be during those times, the professional development. There's state required professional development that, that takes hours and hours and hours and we're still not done yet, frankly, and then the, now, there are sometimes challenges to that, the state's. Server crashed, we said aside all this time, teachers tried to do it, the server crashed, nobody could get it done, so those kind of things happen, but. There's state required PD, then there's the PD that we need to make sure the teachers are feeling comfortable with their professional learning plan that's new from the state. There's PD like inter-reading, which is the, the reading program, one of the six that you could choose that are required from the state of Connecticut that have to been implemented, there's structured literacy, there's, you know. There's bridges, there's all these things we also have to provide PD on, so it can't be only CIA, which is why it's so important. And the teachers need, you know, the PD, and there's teacher-driven PD, February is going to have a lot of that. But we need to balance that time and that's why the ERs are so important.
Yeah, well, sorry, well, one last follow-up, and hopefully this will just be quickly, so this accreditation is just like you said, for the ninth, the 12th grade for this. A New England accreditation, is this curriculum though? Is there, is there also a project of the written curriculum being updated or formatted at the other schools as well?
Oh yeah, 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 so even though it's 912. 68, you know, for instance, when I was doing the work, and, and, and when I say I was doing the work, I'm just letting you know, we all, we all engage, right? So the curriculum supervisors, all the other administrators, you know, they're incredibly bright people, smarter than me, going out there, doing all this work, I'm just rolling up my sleeves and getting in there with them. But 68, those social studies teachers joined us as well. Now K5, they do social studies differently because there's no social studies teacher per se, they share that role. So there, you know, when you get into the K, pre-K1 and then 35, they, they're 35, they're teaching maybe more than one, but they're teaching more subjects than say one, single one, like they are 612. So we do curriculum differently down there, the development has to be done a little bit differently, the teachers will engage a little bit differently, so. While there's a lot of energy in the 612 zone, 912 zone, and NEASK, you know, is right looming for the two-year. We're still continuing work in the K5, our curriculum, and those teams are going to be working as well, they're not as familiar at that level with the UBD format, they haven't had as much of the training. So more of the time for the K5 is going to be helping get them familiar with the UBD format that I described. Also, K5 is where the science of reading and all of the reading requirements are, so they actually have in some ways. A lot more that they have to handle from a state initiative point of view, like. You can't say, no, we're not going to do inter-reading, for instance, you have to do inter-reading, and if you talk to any teacher about inter-reading, it's valuable, but it's very heavy. It's a very heavy lift to learn, there's a tremendous amount of information, there's a lot of materials, so they need time, so. We might be able to do something at the high school with some time that the K5ers have to dedicate to something like inter-reading. So it's, it's trying to find the right balance without being overwhelming while still making sure we, you know. Get to where NEASK wants us to be and that we're able to, you know, expand our efforts and, and make it grow faster.
All right, but I guess all the time I'll take, that's, we'll follow up later on the time.
Any other questions? I've got one, Dr. Will, it's on the financial summary. It says substantive changes between NEASK site visits such as budget-related staff reductions will need to be reported to NEASK.
Right.
At what type of a tempo, is that they want to wait until they come back or?
We're gonna, we're gonna be, so, and that's, that's why I have it up here. So one of the things that happens right now between the last visit and the next one is they're going to want to know what was reduced. And they're going to want things reported to them and there were some substantive changes. That we have to report from a budget perspective. My guess that they are going to probably, it's, it's going to be something that they comment on. You know, I, I can, you know, anytime we have that kind of budget impact in a NEASK cycle, they're going to, they're going to look at it and, you know. Probably tell us there's some things that we need to pay attention to and rectify.
So this is, this is not something that they will, that we wait till we come, till they come back. This is something that we would push to them after a budget cycle.
You gotta, we have to push it to them, which we're in the process of doing, and then what will happen is they. Anything that is bureaucratic is not usually turning on a dime. And NEASK is a structure that is bureaucratic, so what will happen is we will, we will, you know, send the substantive changes, their committee will look at it somewhere down the line, they're going to respond. So you're talking a cycle of months here. But, but we do have to report our substantive changes, so we report what happened in this budget cycle, you know, that, the last one, and whatever happens in this one. And then they will, they will likely comment on it.
They can throw that comment in junk mail and move on.
Any other questions?
They, they might make something relevant.
All right, thank you, sir. Any other questions? All right. Let me see, you can get my agenda back up here. All right, no new business, so looks like the next item is public participation. Two minutes limit, comments must be limited to items on the agenda. Again, if you would like to raise your hand in the room or raise your Zoom hand online, will be called upon. Seeing none. All right. I will now entertain an emotion to enter into executive session. The possible action concerning an amendment to the administrator's contract inviting Dr. Willett in.
I'd like to make a motion to enter executive session. Possibly action concerning an amendment to the administrator's contract.
All right, Dr. Will, would you like to join us? Second. Discussion. All right, Katie. Jen.
Hi.
Hi, Brian. Reenie.
Hi.
Dana.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
All right. Thank you everybody, welcome back. Which delayed for just a moment. That was larger.
I'm sorry, I was just.
That's the.
I can read it.
All right. So, I will entertain a motion.
Yeah, so I would motion to authorize the superintendent to negotiate and approve a memorandum of understanding. With the Tallinn Administrative Society to reorganize curriculum administration.
Another second.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. Katie.
Hi.
Jen.
Hi.
I'm in, hi, Brian.
Hi.
Reenie.
Hi.
Dana.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
Dr. Willett motion passes. All right. Points of information, would anybody from the board like to speak? Right, Dr. Willett, future?
You've got a series of instructional rounds coming up for the future. And I encourage you to sign up on, there's a signup forum there, on the dashboard to sign up for instructional rounds, please do that. That helps us know how many people are coming, the next one that is coming up is October 28th, it's at the high school and it's the fine arts programming. You haven't seen that yet, you haven't really gotten a chance to go through and see that, so it's a, it's great, the next one after that is in January. And it's the math intervention, I also highly recommend it, I think those of you who have been able to eke out the time to do it, I have found it very, very good. It gives you a really good chance to see the operations and how things are functioning and inside the school. Highlight the great staff that we have, wonderful student body. And it gives you a real insight into the programming itself, whether it's intervention, whether it's fine arts, whether it's unified arts and MTSSS, you know, that's the thing, it helps you understand things better, right?
I absolutely concur, I strongly recommend going if you can. All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, Sacko like to take it? Yes, discussion. Hey, Katie.
Hi.
Jen.
Hi.
Brian. Reenie.
Hi.
Dana.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
And Dan.
Hi.
I, if you're, thank you all for a great evening.